All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we're conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually on the Zoom platform. We're glad that you've joined us here for our meeting tonight. During public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand digitally, and staff will unmute your microphone and allow you to have you announce your name, and then you'll be able to make comments. If you're here, let's see. If you're here with us in person, we'll ask that you queue up behind the podium, sign in on the sign-in sheet for the purpose of the minutes and state your name and whether you're a borough resident. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers tonight, and then to those who are joining us remotely. We have two public comment periods, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per a public participation session. With the breadth of tonight's agenda, we do ask that participants keep their comments to three minutes or under, and we will be limited to the first public participation session to one hour. Thank you again for joining us tonight. We will now begin with pledge allegiance and bonus hours. And with that, if we can start with a roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Carmenito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan. Ms. Kirchner. Here. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb. Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Yuwol. Here. Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant Chief. Solicitors here in the corner. Thank you, sir. And Ms. Webb is excused tonight to do some hair obligations. On tonight's agenda, we do not have any presentations that I'm aware of, so we will move into the first round of public participation. So any members of our community wishing to make comment, if you want to step up to the podium, again, I'll just announce. If you didn't sign into the sheet that's on the podium and state your name and whether you're a resident.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and Manager. My name is Susan Meadows. I'm a longtime resident and owner of Generations Toy Store. I'm here on behalf of the fifty-five retailers, breweries, restaurants, service services, and nonprofits that signed the petition to stop closing Bridge Street every weekend from May to October. We fully support closing Bridge Street for one full weekend a month and for scheduled special events, or alternatively, close Main Street on First Friday, as we did successfully for many years, and Bridge Street for the remainder of the weekend, all weather dependent. Given the negative comments on Facebook regarding anyone who opposed the street closures, signing the petition was not done lightly. I am aware of at least two councilpersons who believe that the owners were bullied into signing. As one of the people who met with owners, that directly reflects on my integrity. I can assure you, the fifty-five people who signed the petition are adults with the ability to think for themselves and have the fortitude to say no. The majority, if not all, of the signers have weathered COVID, thanks in large part to you. As our elected officials who made the correct decision at the time to close Bridge Street, to save the restaurants and the breweries, it worked. However, it has run its course. The closures now have a negative impact on almost all of the businesses in our downtown. It has removed much of the parking and with it the accessibility of the businesses. In addition, the advertising of their business by potential new customers driving by and discovering something new. If it rains, the restaurants are especially hit hard. They make purchases of the perishables in anticipation of a busy weekend that become a complete financial loss. I acknowledge that there are those who support the closures and, a result, have had a positive impact on their businesses. I am truly happy for them and believe those businesses would fare well either way. Can anyone say the closures are the only reason for a decline in business? No. However, we are able to say with conviction it has been a major factor. You have the full petition. You know who signed it. Imagine, if you will, within a year, all of them gone. And decisions you make about the street closures is the straw that broke that camel's back. Is that a decision that you are willing to live with? You may think I'm being dramatic. I'm not. Don't fool yourself. There are many business owners or the representatives here tonight that signed the petition. They have made many committee meetings. They have not all been able to attend every meeting. They are busy running their businesses. In closing, if the business owners are here, we kindly raise their hand. I would ask. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Caroline Duffy, and I'm speaking on behalf of my father, Tom Duffy, who owns House of Jerky on ten South Main Street. Our family opened the Phoenixville House of Jerky six years ago. To say owning a retail business has been a learning experience is an understatement. I never realized how much time, sweat, equity, and money goes into running a small business. My wife will often joke that everyone's getting paid money but us, our suppliers, our landlord, our employees, our utility company, the list goes on. We choose to stay open because we do really love our little store and, most importantly, the Phoenixville community. But, and let's not kill ourselves, we do need to make money in order to keep the lights on and our people paid. It is why we are asking Council to strongly consider the voice of the business community, whereas the majority of businesses polled in town, which is sixty-seven percent, want to have street closures occur only on one weekend a month. I believe that all of you on Council were emailed a PowerPoint by the PVA, and some of you had it presented to you in a committee meeting. Bring back First Fridays on Main Street and close Bridge Street the remainder of the weekend. When we had First Fridays pre-pandemic, our foot traffic was up significantly versus what it is now. Sales confirm it for us. Since the Bridge Street closures, our sales are down an average of forty-two percent on those nights and down for the rest of the weekend as well. We do believe this is happening because the folks who come into Phoenixville for the street closures are a different type of crowd. They are the beer and bite crowd. They are not the crowd that will shop and support the retail businesses or the arts. As a small retail business owner, our best months of the year are November and December. If you're not making it during those months, it's not even worth opening in January. So I have to ask the question, why did Phoenixville allow for the closure of Bridge Street on Black Friday and the Main Street parking lot on Small Business Saturday? When we signed the lease to rent the storefront for our business, it was with the understanding that potential customers could actually have access to our store. It is our hope that Council hears the voice of the business, arts, and residential communities and to limit the street closure to one weekend a month, First Friday on Main and Bridge Street closures for the remainder of the weekend. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to address this matter. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sarah Howell. I am the resident of Phoenixville, and I'm also a small business owner myself. And I'm here to express unconditional support of the PXV Inside Out program. I love it so much. I was so disappointed when it was cut down to just eighteen weekends last year. I think it is the highlight of what makes Phoenixville so special. The lack of cars allows for a significantly more pleasant experience on these weekends. It is, there is no, the car noise, the smell, the exhaust pollution, all of that is gone when we're walking around our beautiful neighborhood and walking into our shops, walking into our restaurants, walking around with children who can just wander Bridge Street freely, knowing that they're not going to get hit by a car on like a lovely Saturday. It's incredible, and it is such a beautiful highlight of what Phoenixville has to offer. I would hate to see us lose any more of it than we've already lost. So I heard the first speaker say that there were fifty-five business owners that supported the road closure according to a poll. Like I said, I'm a business owner, and I did take the Inside Out poll, the official one. So if that's the one that she's talking about, I have not seen those results, but if that's not the one that she's talking about, I wasn't polled, so I'm not sure how sixty-six percent of local businesses are not in support of the road closure when I wasn't polled. And then fifty-five people is significant, sure, but how many people support it? That I would be interested in knowing of the of the poll that was taken with the QR codes around the streets is does this seem right to you guys? Anyways, if nothing against the small, like, I want all the businesses to survive also. I am not wanting any of these businesses to close. But I am here in support of this. My husband and I moved to Phoenixville three years ago. We, like a lot of newer residents to this area, have the privilege to basically choose where we wanted to move, and we chose Phoenixville. And we chose Phoenixville because of the intentional work that this council has done since two thousand and eight, at least, with the visionary plan to turn Phoenixville into what it is now. And the road closure is that like, fully realized. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name's John Keenan. I do reside in town. I'm at seven thirty-nine Main Street. I'm also the president of the Historical Society of Phoenixville. The subject of the Bridge Street closure came up again at our last board meeting. All fifteen members of our board are very much against this closure. It's not just me. It has reduced the number of visitors who visit on a First Friday and makes Church Street into the new Bridge Street bypass. If you ever want to see cars that are not doing what they should, just take a walk on Church Street. Long lines of traffic, frustrated drivers, and this all happens because Bridge Street's closed, and there's no other way to go but Church Street. If Borough Council is really interested in getting the truth, plan now for a poll during the spring two thousand and twenty-four election. This would make the closure of Bridge Street a ballot referendum. I've spoken to our own mayor about this, this very thing at a Kiwanis meeting. Then the town would give you feedback, so you can make a decision of the people and for the people, not just what you're hearing from different people that may not be all factual. And I've also heard some things that some of this is geared or is being driven by Facebook. Facebook can be anybody, any age, any place. The list you got today has names and phone numbers. I thank you for your time.
Good evening. Dave Meadows, six fifteen Main Street and one thirteen Main Street. I sent you all a, the mayor and all council members, and Gene Crack, an email with a letter built into it on Sunday night, and I know it's probably hit you at the time you had that big package from from the manager to review for tonight's meeting, but anyway, I apologize, but I just wanted to go over a little bit. And again, I'm, basically, my target here tonight is to plan to convert or study and seek funds for the conversion of the Main and Bridge Street parking lot into a park. Definitely opposed to that on many fronts. One, I mean, I think it's a vital asset to the borough. It contains thirty-five parking places with a two-hour limit or a limit on the parking time, and it's metered to help enforce that. And with a one-to-two-hour turnover rate, those thirty-five spaces will easily project two hundred to two hundred and fifty customer vehicles over a twelve-hour day. And that's big to a merchant downtown, whether it's a merchant or a restaurant or a service, I mean, a service organization, or even to a professional office. The history on that parking lot was in nineteen eighty-three. The council from nineteen eighty-three took a bold step. I was on council from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty, just like you are. At the time, Phoenix Steel was opening and closing about every six months. The nearby tire factories are closing, Valley Forge General Hospital was moving out of town. We were looking to turn out one out of every four streetlights to make ends meet. About thirty percent of the businesses downtown were shuttered, and Rich, you came into town shortly around the end of my tenure on council, and I think you can recount some of that. Anyway, we did the first bump out parking down on Bridge Street. We got a grant from some agency. Controversial because we eliminated some parking places. I think it's been redone several times over to what we have today. But part of that ordinance that was passed in November of nineteen eighty-three allowed for the creation of the Downtown Phoenixville Parking Improvement District, established the way it was going to be built and funding. Part of the funding was for a special tax district. Put on eighty-seven properties, commercial properties downtown, six of them being nonprofits, including the Historical Society, the Chamber of Commerce, my wife and my property down there, we all paid. Warren Brown, I think, was still in town then. We all helped pay for that thing. Pedco, who was still around, they threw a hundred thousand at that project. And it's been a great success in helping businesses downtown since then. In the Park Phoenixville Study that was done in two thousand and seventeen, and I would recommend if any of you newer people on council are not familiar with this, go on the borough's website, and you can pull it down. Even if you only read the first six pages, the executive summary, that was a well-done study, and it really characterized current, near-term and long-term parking issues in the borough based on projections. It cites, near-term, there was a need for two hundred new parking spaces, and by twenty-thirty, a thousand, they were projecting. I know the borough's established three hundred additional parking spaces in town, but we have a long way to go. When I look at parking in a town like Phoenixville, I look at short-term and long-term assets. Short-term, to me, would be the hundred and two spaces on Bridge Street, the thirty-five spaces in the parking lot. Long-term would be the new parking lot down at the steel plant or over near Luxor on Wheatland Street or Holy Ghost Church. That's long-term, and the long-term is, if you're coming into town, you want to get dinner, you want to shop, you want to take in a movie, yeah, you're going to park long-term. But if you want to go downtown and pick up a box of chocolates or drop off a set of drawings at a professional office or go pick up a birthday present at my wife's store, you're looking for something you can get in and out in ten or fifteen minutes. I think that's a big factor here that we need to look at. ADA parking is well-served at the Main and Bridge Street parking lot. It's the only place in town where you can get out on the Bridge Street with a wheelchair and not have to fend or deal with Main Street Hill or the extreme slopes or the lack of proper handicap curb cuts on Main Street Hill. If you ever come down the east side of Main Street Hill and try and go down that little ramp of prospect, you could never do that. I can barely do a walking sometimes. So, anyway. That being said, I'm here to defend the continued use of that bridge in Main parking lot as it was originally intended to be. Thank you.
Any members wishing to make comment via the Zoom platform? If you want to raise your hand digitally, members of our staff will promote you and allow you to make public comment. And we'll queue them up on Zoom. Absolutely. Yep, yep. Try and get them lined up.
I'm Chris McKay. I live over the bridge on Montclair. I don't even know if I'm allowed to speak, but I want to thank you guys for everything you did after the flood. That was really wonderful for us. We love Phoenixville and the town. I just wanted to make sure I came because I know a lot of local government is kind of run by, you know, who can show up to a meeting. I know that the closed streets are really wonderful for the children. It's like the center of our weekend. I bring toddler in, we get a bagel at Saltane or Sweet Brew or Steel City, or go to any of the number of businesses that have been mentioned already, then we head to the park, and we come back for dinner time because you can eat outside, you know, and your kid can be a pain inside a restaurant, but they can just run around the street. It's really wonderful. So I just want to make sure that the parents have gotten a little view, because I don't know if you know, but seven PM on a weeknight is a little rough to kind of exit the house. I left my wife back home with the kids to do bedtime and bath time, so I just want to make sure that, you know, the parents, you know, because it is not just, you know, the midnight drunken thing. There's a lot of like morning family time, and it's really wonderful. That's all I want.
Hello, everyone. I'm Richard Gump Devaney. How's that? I want to speak a little bit about the Phoenixville Inside Out. As a resident, I can't speak for the stores because I'm not a store owner, but I've lived in this area for seventy-seven years. I've lived on Prospect Street since nineteen eighty-six. And I want to say the people that enjoy the street closure, I get that. I really do. I mean, it's nice. But as far as the residents on the small streets where all the traffic occurs every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, it's pretty bad. We can't sit out front. We can't even open our windows because starting Friday afternoon, as soon as you close Bridge Street, the traffic uses Prospect Street as much as the avenues, maybe more. Sometimes it's bumper to bumper on a Friday night. It's unreal, the noise. We've lost our peace, and it's not just me. It's my neighbors on the one-hundred block across Big Street. That's all I can speak to. We've lost our serenity. As far as the speed limit's concerned, I know the borough loaded the fifteen mile per hour. No one's doing fifteen. It's more like thirties than normal and above. And I guess they can't enforce it because there's nowhere to pour a car over. It's a narrow back alley street. And so it's been a problem, and I wouldn't have bought my house there if I'd known that this was going to happen for the whole spring and summer, where we have to keep our doors shut and our windows shut in front of the house. It's bad. But I understand the other side of the story where the people are enjoying it. I get that, but at what price do the residents have to pay? I mean, is it going to go on forever? If so, I'll sell my house. I can't stay there. It's that bad. I just wanted to share from a personal point of view and as a resident what street closure does to us every weekend. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanne McCracken. I'm here representing the Senior Center and the seniors of Phoenixville. We have to close the center at one o'clock on Friday afternoons in order to accommodate people getting home without getting caught in the traffic. Like some, I enjoy the ability to be able to walk around downtown. I don't know that we have to do it every week. And I think that we don't know exactly how it does affect us because since COVID, it has been. So maybe it's we reel it back, we take a look and follow the traffic because I know that that's one of the issues, is traffic on Prospect Street, traffic on Gay Street. Take a look at where the signage is pointing people to parking and see if we can't give relief to some of the people and enable us as seniors to be able to get a full day in at the senior center and then be able to get home. As far as the parking lot turning to a park, again, if you're a senior and you're in a wheelchair or using a walker, that is the place to park and be able to get to dinner or the Colonial or my husband had his knee replaced, and we went to go to a movie at the Colonial. And in order to get him there, I had to drive down Gay Street, cross the bridge, come back, drop him off at the corner of across from Molly McGuire's. He could sit in the bench there while I went to the senior center and parked. And then I walked him back, sat at the the bridge. I ran up to the senior center, got the car, had to go up to Washington, across, down, all the way around to pick him up again to be able to get home. So unless you've ever had to do that, you don't understand, and I would encourage you to spend a little time with a walker or a wheelchair and try to get yourself around town. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Gascón, and I am a resident of Phoenixville. I'm a recent resident, actually. I moved in two thousand and twenty, in the middle of the pandemic, which was super fun. I am not a small business owner, so I cannot speak on their behalf, but I would like to address the Phoenixville Inside Out. I am in support of the program. I do find that, you know, it's been wonderful to be able to go out on the street on the weekends, like others have mentioned up here. I was very sad when it was shortened this year, and I am supportive of it being every weekend. I find that I'm part of the morning crowd that goes out and gets bagels and coffee, and I am also part of that new-fangled evening crowd that is out at midnight. But I have to say that when I'm out on the weekends, I found it easier to walk to shops. I find I am more likely to shop at local shops. I bought a bike this year from Twisted Cog, and I don't want to say it's because the streets were closed that weekend that I bought it. But I find that it has definitely made it more easy for me to use a bike to get downtown and just be around in the wonderful community that we call home. So, sure and sweet. That's me. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Teresa Brewer. I am a business owner. I'm also, I live in town since nineteen sixty-four. And I'll just say it once, I can remember when this town thrived. I remember when this town died, and I'm grateful for the people who bought it back. I'm grateful for the street closures, and I loved it when it was once a month. It felt like it brought people in. I know it brought people in because a lot of my customers are saying to me, they came in from Annie Oak, they came in from Chestnut Hill. They no longer come. It's no longer an event. It's every weekend of the same thing with nothing going on. And because I'm downtown, I've seen the drop of people that are even coming. I actually have pictures of weekend after weekend of no one on the street or not a lot of people in the street. And I do understand the young folks that have their children, and it's a great time for your children. But there's people that are paying their rent every month, and it's getting harder and harder to do it. I was here, but there was no shops, but there was a lot of alcohol and a lot of bad behavior. And I would hate to see that happen again, and I'm watching people count their numbers, and they're down. There are fifty-seven. There are fifty-seven uh, businesses that are sign this petition. We love this town. I'm born, I'm raised. This is my town. I'm grateful for the people who are moving in. We love you too. But we need, I want to keep my business and I want the business to also be able to maintain theirs. This is our home. Thank you for letting me.
Hi, I'm Keely Wrigley, twelve South Main Street. Um, I feel like this open forum could go on forever with someone saying, I love it and someone saying, I hate it. So I think I spoke about a year ago and I said the same thing. I said, you know, I think there's still room for compromise, right? So we're hearing a lot of great things. Um, and we're hearing businesses and residents that say they don't like it. So why don't they like it? And how can we work together um, and communicate um, and get feedback right from everyone and not to the point where a survey has to go out via Facebook or a petition has to go out from a shop owner. Um, you know, there's not that many downtown businesses where we can't have better communication with one another rather than monologues um, at a podium. So that's all.
Logan, if you want to move over, we'll do a couple of people from Zoom. We'll come back to the
Tracy, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. Um, so I, I know on the agenda tonight, there's um, the
Hold on, can you please state your name and whether you're a resident?
Sure. Tracy Tackett. I'm a resident of Church Street. Um, I just, on the agenda, you, it has uh, that the borough is going to be pursuing an LSA grant to convert uh, the parking lot at the corner of Bridge and Main to a park. And while I think that's sounds lovely, um, I think there's still a significant uh, parking deficit in the commercial core based on the twenty seventeen parking study. And I would just ask that uh, if the borough is going to pursue this, consider an elevated space above the parking so that you don't have to eliminate critical parking for ADA accessibility. And you could have an amazing space that has an access from Main Street and maybe steps up from Bridge. So you could have your parking that serves people who, you know, need to get downtown and maybe are in a wheelchair and it still could create an, an open space for the downtown. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Jason Bead. I'm a Phoenixville resident. I'm not a small business owner. A lot of respect for the small business owners who have spoken up today. Sure, it takes a lot of courage. I have no doubt that the perspectives that you share are super valid. I just wanted to come represent normie Phoenixville residents who really enjoy um, the road closures. Uh, like the folks that spoke earlier, um, I moved to Phoenixville three years ago with my wife uh, to start a family by a house. And we, we go down there, I mean, at least twice a month, if not every weekend. Um, I can say just, I mean, I have a unique perspective, um, but I guarantee I shop more because of the road closures. I, I love the House of Jerky. I've got five stamps on my card. Uh, and I, I, you know, just from my perspective, I guarantee I'm in there more often because the roads are closed. Um, we do bring in friends. We bring in, you know, uh, coworkers when they're in town. We go down there. Um, it's a lot of fun. So just wanted to offer that perspective. And uh, more parking, I agree with that. I didn't know that was on the docket, but I agree.
No more hands raised, Mr. Ewell.
Anyone else? With that, we'll close the first round of public participation. Uh, moving on to our consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. The motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to approve the consent agenda. Any comments, removals, annotations needed? I'm seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. That's agenda passes unanimously. With that, we'll move on to communications and council participation. Any updates from any members of council on any pertinent items? Ms. Berkeley?
I have just a couple of things. Um, I'm sure the mayor will cover much, much more. Um, but I did want to give a little shout out to our HRC, so our Human Relations Commission. They are rebuilding, um, and they are working on many things for the new year, a lot of proactive things. And they're also working on an inclusive, um, inclusive it, oh, inclusivity, sorry. Um, index. So I think that that's really valuable um, for us as a community. We can continue to look at how inclusive we are across all different channels. Um, the chamber also timely with everybody in the room has a round table this Thursday at the Colonial at seven P M. Um, to talk about downtown dialogue, um, to talk about, you know, what are, what are the challenges and what are some opportunities that we can seize? So that again is Thursday, November sixteenth at seven P M. And it's at the Colonial. Um, and then our Code Blue Center did open this Monday. Um, so if you or someone you know in one of the neighboring townships does need services, the Sarah Center is there, um, and the Code Blue Center is open. We open at ten um, P or eight P M. Um, until eight A M. Uh, and there are uh, case managers, management services available there as well. If you're looking to support Code Blue, we just got done the bed races. There is um, some fundraising opportunities you can find on their website.
Thank you, Beth. Mr. Weiss?
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to everybody that came out to speak tonight in public participation. We do appreciate hearing from everybody and uh, we do take it into account and make our decisions. So just wanted to thank you all.
Just as a follow-up to that, the, the Phoenix Inside Out for twenty twenty-four is not on tonight's agenda. It will be at Parks and Rec as it has been being discussed recently. We will be discussing the LSA grant application, which is the bridge to Main Street. So just more.
I'd just like to thank all those who uh, worked so tirelessly uh, in our election from last week. Um, it's a strong turnout in the borough and uh, appreciate all the people who spend that whole day from, I guess, close to five in the morning till um, nine or ten at night, um, taking care of all our voters. And I appreciate everybody who came out and voted.
Ms. Moore? Anything else? That will move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to all of those joining us here in the room. Also, thank you to those of you who are joining us uh, virtually. Um, certainly to echo what Mr. Weiss said, always a, a good to be here and to have a, a meaningful and respectful dialogue with one another. I just wanted to give you an update on things that have happened last month and things that are coming up this month. Uh, I just wanted to give a special shout out to Upper Providence Township. Uh, for many of you, you may have seen Upper Providence actually hosted the Wall That Heals, uh, which is a replica of the Vietnam War Memorial. Um, it was a really um, special and solemn occasion for them to host it uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, and a very special thank you to um, Bill Peters, who is the husband of Cameron Peters, who is a Vietnam War uh, veteran. And I'm later wreath on behalf of the Borough of Phoenixville, um, especially a number of our residents who passed away and who were killed in action. And so thank you so much uh, to Bill and to Cameron who designed that very special wreath. Um, also a very special thank you to our uh, rec department. We had an extraordinary Fall Fest, wonderful turnout. Um, and that was, you know, kind of to celebrate our fall season as well as Halloween. Uh, we had some wonderful Veterans Day celebrations. I hope that uh, next year, anyone who is interested, we would encourage you to attend the Sunday before Veterans Day, the BFW holds a special one at our memorial right in Reese Park. Um, and Barclay Elementary School had a very special uh, assembly on Monday where they invited uh, veterans who are relatives of students to actually come in and be uh, honored on that day. So thank you very much to both the BFW, also the American Legion who helps to plan that and Barclay Elementary School. Uh, very special thank you to uh, Detective Sergeant Pat Mark and uh, Detective Corporal Nick Natale. Uh, they actually put on a citizens police academy. It was an eight-week program. Uh, it went very, very well. And I'd like to just congratulate all of the graduates who graduated last uh, Wednesday night. We will be doing it again. Um, so I would encourage you to watch uh, Facebook, social media and all of the uh, other uh, communications outlets, which we have. If you are interested in participating, it is really like a small condensed version of a police academy where you understand kind of modern policing techniques and how they all work. So thank you all very much uh, for participating. Very special shout out this morning uh, to Mr. Crack and our team here, certainly the Borough Council who supported it and uh, V F uh, G V F. Uh, which is our transportation authority manager, sorry, not authority, uh, management group in uh, Greater Valley Forge. And uh, for our mid-block crosswalk uh, opened this morning. So just another way that we are constantly evaluating as a borough um, how to help pedestrians get around our community. So that's right in front of uh, Phoenix Village coming over to the Great American Group Hub. So if you've seen that new uh, crosswalk there, it is there temporarily while it's being studied, but we hope to see something maybe more permanent in the future. Uh, big things that are coming up, the joy of socks, which is actually a, a nonprofit. They are all over the region, but they are located in the Borough of Phoenixville. They will be having their one millionth sock donated uh, this uh, I think on the nineteenth uh, coming up. So uh, their one millionth sock, so it's a big uh, occasion for them. So joy of socks. Also, very happy Thanksgiving to all of you uh, to all of our borough residents and certainly those who celebrate. But uh, most importantly, thank you for being here. Thank you for being part of this community. Certainly, we wish you and your family uh, very happy holidays as we take some time uh, to really reflect on our families and our community. Uh, let me see. Other than that, uh, December uh, first, December first will be the, our tree lighting in the Borough, Main and Bridge Street Parking Lot. December second and third, uh, you can go to the Colonial Theater's website, but they are doing a Christmas spectacular, which is being ju- done in conjunction with Feet First uh, Dance Academy, the Firebird Festival, of course. I think, Ms. Berkeley, did you, you cover the
I didn't. Oh, so go right ahead.
Thank you. We always have to check who's covering which one. The Firebird Festival will be on the ninth. Uh, and also um, the Phoenixville Senior Center on the second of December. Uh, if you have an opportunity, go visit the Phoenixville Senior Center's website. You can go on the Phoenixville Holiday House Tour. A, a little different this year. It's actually being coordinated by the Phoenixville Area Senior Center as a new program and um, the money and the proceeds will all benefit the Senior Center. So I'd highly encourage you to do that. And then I, I believe that's all we have for today. Thank you all very much. Uh, certainly uh, wish you all a very safe and happy uh, holidays.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, with that, we've uh, section eight appointments. Uh, we, we have an action under that item yet. Consent, perfect. Section nine under new business, uh, we have our annual favorite. We have the uh, review of the general fund draft budgets. Turn it over to Mr. Crack.
Oh, boy. Uh, can I share again? Really? Drama with the lights? Wow. Okay. Uh, here we go. Let's see. Do it. Yay. All right. All right. Uh, good evening, Borough Council, Mayor Ursler, uh, folks in the audience and folks out in the uh, internet world. Um, every year, uh, we start the process of the budget uh, staff-wise in June timeframe. All the department heads start putting together uh, the things that uh, they're hopeful for uh, and uh, desirous of uh, to approve the things that we do in, in the borough. And we roll that out over the, the June and July timeframe uh, and, and then present uh, to the uh, Ms. Dugan's Finance Committee uh, in August, uh, the enterprise funds and then September and October, uh, the general fund, uh, and if need be, some more dialogue on the, the enterprise funds. Such that we get to this point uh, in November where we have a, a requirement by Borough Code, which is uh, somewhat archaic. It requires us to put forth a draft budget, uh, but as council knows over these many years, the, the dilemma that we face is that not all of the uh, needed information is available to us. We're still waiting on a multitude of things involving healthcare, workers' compensation, uh, uh, the general liability insurances. Uh, the, the big one, the assessed valuation from the county, those numbers have not come in. So uh, we do a little bit of uh, uh, understanding based on our history, but it's, it's, it's somewhat of a vacuum over that next thirty days. So tonight, uh, we present the draft budget as we know it, uh, with the information that we are aware of. Uh, over the past several months, again, we've collaborated and developed a budget that addresses the various challenges and opportunities we face. We strive to align our financial resources in order to concentrate on our residents' quality of life while supporting and implementing the priorities of Borough Council. At present, the budget expenses in the general fund exceed the projected revenues. Uh, the physical impact of a rising inflation rate, increased staffing costs, rising healthcare expenses, pension costs, labor agreement upticks, coupled with an ever-important cybersecurity prevention measures, all contribute to increased expenses in this draft budget. Fifty-three percent of the general fund expenditures are dedicated to emergency services. The balance of those expenses are distributed amongst public works, I T and communications, facilities, codes and planning, parks and recreation, legislative, administrative, human resources and finance. Although we've hopefully moved on from the uncertainty of the pandemic, the borough now faces new challenges. Global factors such as rising inflation and interest rates, supply chain delays, workforce competition, and a slowing of the economy, uh, the economy negatively impact the borough's ability to meet or exceed our demands that are put upon it. As demands on our resources escalate, we must thoughtfully and deliberately grow to meet them while remaining physically responsible. The borough's budget and forecast conservatively to maintain strategically expanding services as growth and demand warrant. We believe the draft budget does that and reflects prudent, physically sound investments to continue delivering all of our borough programs and serve effectively, efficiently and safely. So with that, I will hopefully start the slides here. So uh, many of, quite candidly, I think all of us could say this is the most people we've ever had at this time of the year with the draft budget in the audience. So great for you folks for being out here. This is a welcome. So we start with our enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are funds that do not affect the tax base. Uh, they are standalone uh, uh, budgets for those of you that uh, are new to this. So the parking fund, we start out, we show what the capital and personnel requests uh, have been asked for in that. Uh, and in this uh, uh, twenty twenty-four budget, uh, they are asking for these items uh, that are shown here for a total of one hundred ninety-two thousand and fifty-nine dollars. Uh, they are asking at this point in time, not for any personnel increases. So yes, I have to. Okay. So with that, uh, we are projecting revenue in parking at one point two four million with expenditures of one point zero eight one million, a, a net total uh, positive of a hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, we have a fund balance uh, as of October sixteenth of four hundred and twenty-two thousand plus. Our, our proposed use of funds of uh, uh, one hundred ninety-two thousand from the aforementioned slide uh, gives us a net projected fund balance uh, at the end of twenty twenty-four of two hundred dot, two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Sure why it does that. So sanitation, sanitation is uh, that is the uh, the trash pickup, the recycling pickup, the uh, leaf pickup, uh, the compost site. Uh, all of those are part of this department. And so this year, uh, they are actually looking to replace a number of recyclator, uh, recycling toters, uh, some new dumpsters, a two-yard uh, uh, two-yard rear-loading dumpsters. This will be in constant with a new trash truck, uh, a thirty-two yard trash truck and twenty-five percent of a Ford two fifty. Uh, our Public Works Director, uh, just so you know, our Public Works Director, uh, his truck is a good twelve or thirteen years old and we are looking to replace that. So we distribute the cost of that vehicle uh, by uh, different departments so that it's, it's out, there's an allocation towards it. The total cost of sanitation is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eleven. Uh, they are also asking for a new driver Uh, they are also asking for a new driver laborer and two more laborers for a total cost of three hundred and five thousand. So in the status, in the sanitation fund, our revenues are projected for uh, twenty twenty-four of two million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. And our expenditures are looking at two, two million, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand with a net total of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Our fund balance is six hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine sixty-one, and the use of fund balance for those aforementioned uh, uh, items in the. Uh, the capital side of three hundred and seventy-four, that will net us at the end of twenty twenty-four, three hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we are also asking uh, Borough Council to increase uh, the, the rates per quarter to a hundred and ten dollars. Uh, this is due to the, the cost of, primarily due to the cost of tipping fees at both recycling. And the uh, uh, the regular landfill location. Our next uh, Enterprise Fund is our water fund. Uh, this is the uh. Gives you an indication, we have a, a debt service uh, from years past. Uh, we have a original bond of six hundred ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two. Uh, as of December thirty-first, uh, the principal balance will be four hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine. Uh, that bond is due to mature in four years in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, the debt service on that uh, note uh, for twenty twenty-four will be one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety. The capital and personnel requests, uh, capital request, you can see all of these items uh, in here. Uh, there's. Uh, components that are uh, to the treatment side of water, and then there are components that are on the distribution side of water. Uh, co- uh, the total cost for. Uh, uh, treatment is nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, and the total cost for uh, distribution is one hundred and twenty-six thousand. They are not seeking additional personnel requests for twenty twenty-four. So with that, uh, the revenue for twenty uh, twenty-four is, is projected to be six million, forty-three thousand. Uh, with expenditures of five million, six hundred and forty thousand, with a net total of four hundred and three uh, thousand to the positive. Uh, we have a fund balance of one million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and for the aforementioned. Items in the capital, we're looking at a expenditures of one million eighty-seven. That would leave us with a projected fund balance of four hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars for twenty twenty-four. That is not a lot of fund balance, uh, giving an example. We just spent. Over a million dollars replacing the inlets in the Schuylkill River, uh, because they needed upgrades due to uh, wear and tear. Uh, remember too, our, our system is well over a hundred years old. Uh, so there's a lot of. Components in the treatment side and the distribution side. Uh, and so we're asking for an increase uh, at twenty twenty-four to nine dollars and sixty cents. Per thousand gallons of water. Uh, our competition, our, our private sector, uh, primarily Aqua and uh, uh, Pennsylvania American. Both of those are hovering around sixteen dollars plus per thousand gallons. So even with the increase, we're looking at nine sixty. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Crack, the um, the debt service you mentioned at the beginning, is that? Is that supposed to come out of one of these or not?
It comes out of the water fund.
Okay. So, does that affect the four seventy? Will it be less?
That's, that's already projected in the expenditures.
Okay.
Yes. So wastewater, uh, our fourth, uh, Enterprise Fund, um, what we drink has to go someplace, and so that's the wastewater side of things. Uh, we also have a bond uh, uh, from twenty twenty-two of two million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and seven. Uh, the balance, uh, as of December thirty-first of this year is projected to be one million, nine hundred and nine. Uh, that bond too is uh, scheduled to uh, expire in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, the debt service for that in twenty twenty-four will be six hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. And to Mr. Morris's point, that's already projected in the uh, expense side uh, in the next slide. The second next slide, this is the capital personnel request, I'm sorry. So uh, they have a small ask for wastewater this year, uh, some security cameras and uh, camera and uh, some uh, spare parts and, and what have you. To the tune of fifty-four thousand dollars, no additional personnel requests. Uh, so in wastewater, our projected revenue is three million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, expenditures of three million, two hundred and fifty-nine. Gives us a net positive of five hundred and twenty-six thousand. Our fund balance is one million, eight hundred and seventy-three. The use of fund balances fifty-four thousand, giving us a projected fund balance of one million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand. As most of council knows, we are still uh, doing uh, additional upgrades at the plant. Uh, but at this point in time, we don't see a need to raise rates. Uh, we're looking to keep them at six dollars and fifty-five cents a thousand. Uh, clearly well under what uh, the private sector uh, is doing on the outside. So our pension fund, uh, this is the uh. For twenty twenty-three, our Don Uniform, uh, which is the uh, most of the uh, ASPI work, uh, the union workers for the. Water plant, sewer plant, uh, uh, Streets Department, uh, Administration, uh, everybody but the, the uniform itself. Uh, they have a fund balance of twelve million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five as of uh, September thirtieth. We have what is called a minimum municipal obligation. This is what our actuary says that we have to put into that account. In order to keep it uh, stabilized, uh, in addition to the state funding of four hundred and nineteen thousand. Uh, and in addition to that, on the non-uniform side, the employees contribute two percent of wages towards the pension plan. Uh, in the amount of ninety-one thousand. So at the end of the day, the borough makes up the difference from the general fund, which is. Uh, a combination of the four thirty-four and the fourteen nine fifty-six. The police fund has a balance of fifteen million, eight hundred and sixty-one as of September, and the MMO for that is three hundred and forty-eight thousand. Eight hundred and twenty-six with the state funding of three oh one. Uh, as they do not contribute to the pension plan, we have to add in the additional forty-seven, six thirty-three. What's important to note, uh, uh, because most folks have never heard this before. Is that uh, the vast majority, there's twenty-six hundred and sixty municipalities in Pennsylvania. The very vast majority of those are under seventy percent funded. And uh, I'm proud to say here with the help of Borough Council and the, the time that I've been here, uh, nearly sixteen years. We've been able to sustain uh, ninety-five to almost uh, in the times over a hundred percent. Of our uh, our pension fund. So we don't have what is called uh, uh, uh. The, the additional obligations that a lot of municipalities have. It's a dangerous place for those municipalities that are not funding those, those pension plans, but. Uh, this borough has taken a step with the leadership of Borough Council to keep our pension plans fully uh, fully funded. And that's a. Uh, and it, it's a term, that's what we call rare air uh, amongst municipalities. The General Fund Debt Service, uh, we have a original twenty-twelve bond, uh, which we did refinance in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and that is uh, the General Fund portion is six million, nine hundred and fifty-eight, seventy-two. Uh, four twenty, and it retire, next, it retires in November fifteen of twenty thirty-seven. Uh, the debt transfer for that is five hundred and thirty-five thousand for twenty twenty, uh, for twenty twenty-three. And then in, we also have a twenty twenty bond, which was primarily the, the bond we used to finance the. Uh, the Recreation Center and the new fire station. Uh, that bond is stated to mature in November fifteenth, twenty fifty. Uh, the debt service on that in twenty twenty-four will be seven hundred, two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five. Liquid fuels, uh, uh, we are not projecting any capital requests. Uh, we get revenue and uh, this revenue comes from the amount of fuel that is consumed in the Commonwealth by people on the roads, uh, through the taxes. And then it's a portion out to each municipality, uh, based on the amount of money that's taken in, uh, uh, against the population of the municipality. So. Our revenue is expected to be four hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and fifteen. Our expenditures are expected to be three hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight. And uh, although we're not looking at any capital purchases, we do, you know, we do have to pay for uh, uh, the, the lights, uh, the electric. We have to uh, put salt on the road. We have to, you know, do all of the maintenance that uh, is incurred. Uh, so we're. At the end of the day, we're still looking at a net positive of one twenty-nine in twenty twenty-four. With a fund balance of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The Fire Department Fund, uh, we get, uh, there's called, uh, the Local Services Tax. Uh, a portion of that goes directly to the Fire Department, which is seventy-seven thousand. Uh, and then we give Fireman's Relief of one nineteen. That's actually a pass through to the Volunteer Department. Uh, we have some liens and interest, uh, a couple, you know, a hundred dollars there. So our total income projected for uh, twenty-four is one hundred and ninety-six thousand. Our expenditures are expected to be two million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand. So uh, under your tax bill, you will see that there is a fire millage. That millage uh, is what pays the distance that is between expenditures and income, and that millage has to account for the two million. Eighty-eight thousand that's shown here on this line. Parks and Recreation, uh, similar to uh, the Fire Department, uh, there is revenue that is taken in, three hundred and eleven thousand. Uh, there's some small interest of fifteen hundred, uh, the total income being three twelve. The expenditures though are one million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Again, we have a separate millage uh, uh, in the tax uh, uh, tax bill. That millage has to account for the distance, which is one million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-five. So now we're at the General Fund, uh, this is where uh, all of the other things get taken care of. Uh, Recreation, Facilities, Police and Public Works have asked for uh, various things. These items are listed here. Uh, all of, in, all of these are anticipated to come out of. Uh, either uh, fund balance directly, or we have a separate fund. Uh, we have a separate fund for vehicle replacement. We have a separate fund for recreation, the PCIP. I cannot remember what that stands for. Uh, Capital Improvement Projects. Uh, it used to be the fun fun. That was a lot easier to say, uh, but. Uh, uh, at the end of the day, uh, that doesn't hit the bottom line of the uh, the General Fund overall. This is already uh, being ta- will be taken out of what is. Uh, uh, our fund balance. We do have a personnel request. Uh, the Police Department is asking for a patrol officer. Uh, the cost for that is one hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, let me make sure that that's not the salary. That is the total package. That is everything from uh, salary, uh, the health and benefits, uh. Uh, uniforms, all of the things that are associated with that. Ditto with the Fire Department, uh, the difference between what you see at thirteen thousand and what you see at one twenty. One twenty is the right number to account for all of those things. The thirteen thousand is. We, we saw an opportunity, uh, we had a, a line item in the, uh, our Codes Department. That had uh, uh, anticipated a new uh, inspector. Uh, we talked with our Codes Department Head, we talked with the Fire Chief. And we came to agreement that what we were asking or what we were anticipating that Inspector was going to do. Was really more akin to something that would fall under the Fire Department. And by mutual agreement, uh, we are going to transfer within the already existing budget. Uh, the hundred and seven thousand that was allocated for the Codes Inspector, uh, and morph that into uh, the Fire Department if. Uh, we get to the end of the day with uh, with all of this with Borough Council. So the net uh, General Fund Personnel Request is three hundred and twenty-three thousand. So. Revenues, uh, our revenues are expected to be seventeen million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Uh, expenditures nineteen million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand with a. Uh, a negative at this point in time of one million, two hundred and eighty thousand. What that means is uh, we are proposing at this time, uh, and I, I have to qualify this. We have to show. Uh, we, we have to do a process with our ordinance in order to uh, properly advertise that. We do the ordinance anticipating what this could be if we were to do it tonight. Uh, and that would be a, a millage of five point four three mils. For General Recreation, one point four three mils and Fire, two point two eight mils. With a total of nine point one four mils uh, for twenty twenty-four. The total budget for uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, when you take in General Fund, Water Fund, Wastewater Fund, Sanitation Fund and Parking Fund. The borough's total budget for twenty twenty-four is uh, right at thirty-two million dollars. So with that. I, I, I just want to say that, you know, staff remains vigilant as we continue analyzing changing circumstances in the economy. As the impact our ability to deliver to services, although much remains out of our control. I believe we have a good handle on what we do control. Sound financial analysis is the core of our budget development efforts, which puts us in a position to weather storms and take advantage of opportunities that emerge. This draft budget reflects investing in staffing and programs that reflect community needs while supporting boroughs councils, uh, priorities. As stated previously, Phoenixville's tradition of conservative, sound fiscal management has served the borough well through the tough times, including the pandemic. We will continue to work in partnership to manage fiscal sustainability as we move forward during these challenging times. Budget process remains difficult and is more challenging in times of economic uncertainty. We've worked collaboratively in an effort to stay on a reasonable course that will stabilize our finances and ensure greater confidence among our employees and residents. We would like to thank the Borough Council for their support and direction during the preparation of this budget. I would like to thank my Finance Director Monica Kozel-Lubinski, Supervisor Peggy Nymchek. Assistant Borough Manager Kelly Getzfried, HR Director Dina Donato, and my Executive Assistant Jennifer Logan. For their assistance in the budget process. And finally, thanks to every one of the department heads for all of their contributions. Lastly, this is a draft budget with many financial adjustments still to be made. We will continue our internal work as we pre- present additional recommendations to the Finance Committee in the next two weeks. As Borough Council knows, historically, these financial adjustments favorably close the distance between revenue and expenses. And I expect that to be no different as we move to budget adoption at the December Council meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Crack, thank you. With that, we have uh, motions to consider for advertising the twenty twenty-four draft budget. It's Council's pleasure.
I'll make them first.
Second, I wish my Ms. Dugan sent my Mr. Weiss questions on the motion, questions on the items.
I just want to make a comment that uh, we're still in the process of working on this, so um, it's not like this is, this is just the worst it will be. As far as any sort of like, um, a tax increase or anything like that. All of our, we are working really hard. We haven't gotten all the numbers, and I just think it comes down every year, so I don't want anybody to panic. That this is where we are. And um, you know, so I don't want anybody to worry about voting for this right now on Council, you know.
Is our not to exceed number?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Moore.
I'd like to just note that, you know, part of um, the decision in terms of adding firefighters. To the uh, to the staffing is part of the evolution. That we committed to uh, with building the new station. Uh, hiring the, both our, first our Fire Chief and then his office and then his two deputies. And this is just part of the evolution of that, that staffing. And, you know, we had a pretty good conversation with, with him during, in finance. About, you know. What's the right pace with which to adapt that? But with the size of this borough, uh, and we also made a commitment last year to purchase. A, a new vehicle, a new, a new hook and ladder. I know it's not a hook and ladder, but whatever. Um, you know, we, we're. Continuing the process of investing in the professionalization of that to Fire Department because of. The size of this, this borough. So that's one of the major expenditures, just the staffing this year. I thought it was useful to kind of air that with the rest of the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other questions, comments on the uh, advertising the draft budget?
No, I just, thank you, Mr. Moore. I think that was really important. And Dino, we, nobody ever likes to raise taxes, so I'm always hopeful that we get like a little Christmas present in December and there's. A reduction in what's been advertised. Also, sometimes we have to say no. So I did notice there was a couple personnel requests um, that are not in the budget. And I hope that maybe if things, we get better news, we can reconsider that. And I also understand that sometimes we do have to say no.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Seeing no other questions or comments, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Bush Kerry, seven zero. And part and parcel with that, we need to uh, now schedule and advertise ordinance adoption for the twenty twenty-four tax levy. So what is Council's pleasure?
Don't move.
Second, I wish my Ms. Berkeley sent my Mr. Weiss questions on the scheduling and advertising of the aforementioned uh, tax. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Bush Kerry, seven zero. With that, we'll move on to resolutions and ordinances. Section ten of tonight's agenda, we have a number of items to adopt, uh, or consider adopt. With that, we'll move on to resolutions and ordinances. Section ten of tonight's agenda, we have a number of items to adopt uh or consider adopting, so uh.
We'll start firing away.
Yep.
But I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing an independent auditor for the fiscal year twenty twenty three.
Second. Most my Miss Berkeley, same my Mr. Weiss, questions on this motion? This is an annual uh uh, resolution that we do to um appoint an independent auditor each year, so. Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Kerry seven zero.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty four master schedule fees.
Second. Most my Miss Berkeley, second my Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion for this year's schedule fees? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Kerry seven zero.
I'll also make a motion um to adopt a resolution accepting the sale of the two thousand and one. My car might be just as old. Uh, Pierce contender pumper.
Second. Most my Miss Berkeley, second my Mr. Weiss. What was our sale price?
Seventy two thousand, five hundred.
That is a good price.
And I would just add that.
Twenty-two-year-old unit.
Sorry, uh, I would just add that this is to another uh governmental agency, uh, actually to a technical school in Delaware County, uh, and therefore the auction requirements that apply to most borough sales do not apply uh because we are selling to another government.
Good truck. I'm glad somebody else gets to put you into it. No other questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bush Kerry seven zero. Item D.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two subdivision and land development.
Second.
Most my Mr. Weiss, second my Miss Berkeley, questions on our updates at Saldo? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Kerry seven zero.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four taxation special part A neighborhood improvement district.
Second. Most my Miss Berkeley, second my Mr. Weiss, the nid is uh wholly confined to the Steel Point Developments. That is a this was duly advertised during the last course. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four taxation special part four discount and penalties.
Second. Most my Miss Berkeley, second my Mr. Weiss, questions on uh taxation special?
So just since we do have a full house tonight and that's exciting to me, I think we all comp Gene, you commented to have such an audience for the budget is awesome. So people know like where this is going. So we are going through this agenda pretty quickly right now. But all of this is fully vetted during our policy meetings. It's scheduled and advertised. So this isn't the first time it's being discussed. So it may seem like we're making decisions very quickly, but it certainly has been vetted.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to explain this ordinance as well. Um, Pennsylvania state law allows for the municipality to recoup attorney's fees and court costs when uh, it is unfortunately put in the situation where it has to uh try to collect on delinquent taxes. Um, however, in order to do so, uh, that ability has to be reflected in our ordinance. Uh, so, so that's what we're doing. We're availing ourselves of the state.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Kerry seven zero.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter five code enforcement by adding a new part four blasting.
Second. Most my Miss Berkeley, second my Mr. Weiss, very exciting addition to our code enforcement.
I ca- I can give a quick update on this too, uh, because it's a bit unique. Uh, so Pennsylvania law primarily regulates the blasting, uh, like dynamite, um, mostly bedrock type stuff. Um, however, there are some limited scenarios where the borough can provide some additional regulations. Um, and uh, to be honest, we are particularly concerned with blasting around our urban herb reservoir. So we are making sure that uh the strength of any blasting does not impact our reservoir, um, and availing ourselves of those additional scenarios where we can institute additional regulations.
Appreciate that. Any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Kerry seven zero. I'm pulling item H. That's uh, for tonight's agenda. So that does it for section ten of resolutions and ordinances. Which brings us to tonight's public hearing. Uh, I will turn this, well.
I would like to make a motion to recess into an executive session.
Second. So we're going to take a brief executive session. We'll be back in a few minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to resume the public meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries seven zero. Um, and for the record, uh, we went into executive session to discuss the uh, matter of abatement of two oh nine High Street.
I'll make a motion to approve that the structure located at two oh nine High Street is a public nuisance constituting a danger and hazard to public safety. And that said nuisance be abated by the um demolish, demolition or destruction of said structure pursuant to the following conditions. The prop, uh, the owner of the property is hereby ordered to abate the nuisance um conditions as follows. Within sixty days of this order, demolish the structure and remove the debris that's a result of that in order to remove the nuisance conditions. Obtain any and all necessary permits and approvals in order to demolish the structure on the property. Two, in the event of the um, the owner fails to comply with these requirements set forth in the section one above, then the borough may demolish and remove the structure on the property as follows. Any and all prop, uh, personal property remaining on the structure shall be considered abandoned. Any and all fees and costs associated with the demolition of the structure and removal of debris, including um attorney's fees shall be uh charged against the owner of the property and become a miserable lean in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth until the borough received reimbursement for full, therefore.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose. Motion carries seven zero.
We had a motion to exit from public hearing, are we? Right. Different section. Very good. All right, resuming our normal agenda here. Section twelve, we have reports of committees, boards and commissions. Start with planning commission, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and the there is one project in front of us for um consideration. It's a motion to, I can take the motion to adopt a resolution officially conditionally approving uh, or denying the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for the development known as six forty Ringo Street subdivision. Uh, as approved by uh the planning commission um, by a vote of six to one at its meeting on October twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Second, Mr. Moore, um clarification, just, I'm gonna say I cut you off and then get your second.
Yeah, I can get it.
Um, Mr. Moore, just to be clear, are you recommending approval?
Yeah, yes, I am recommending approval because I was reading what the resolution was written.
So your motion is for uh approval of the preliminary final subdivision.
Yes, uh, as approved by planning commission by a vote of six to one.
Thank you. Uh, with that clarification, my second. Most my Mr. Morse, and my Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion for this subdivision?
Just to explain it shortly to my colleagues, uh, this is a property uh that currently has one building on it on Ringgold Street, which is a stretch down from uh Maras Cemetery. Block in from behind, up block in from Nut Road. Where, where TD Alfredo's is and um it's been a subdivision. There was a, the, there is one request for waiver, which is a a request to allow the removal of sixteen existing trees of over six inches in diameter as part of this development. It's conditional upon the older developer coordinating with the borough land planner and borough engineer to make all attempts to retain the twenty-six inch D V H tree on lot one.
Okay, any questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bush Kerry seven zero. Mr. Moore, anything else for planning?
Uh, nothing, nothing further. There was a meeting uh that I've been able to attend uh last week. Uh, one project was approved then, um, and that will be before us uh once it's gone through the standard process, the uh next meeting uh currently scheduled for the um planning commission is on December, Thursday, December thirteenth.
Very good, thank you. Miss Dugan with heart.
We actually have some things to discuss here on Harb. The first one is I'll make a motion to approve the sign request for thirty-five Bridge Street as recommended by Harb.
Second.
Most my Miss Dugan, my Miss Berkeley, questions on the motion?
Uh, the only reason that this was brought here is like I voted against it there, but only so that it wouldn't end up on the consent agenda. Just because this is an unusual um sign, it's not one of your regular ones. And I wanted to make sure everybody on council had seen this before we um approved it.
Questions on the motion?
Well, no. If, if I may, what's unusual?
The uh, the, the face, it's unusual. Yeah, the face on the garage and everything, because that's just not something we normally approve and we don't normally see.
Well, that's in the back, right?
Yes, it is in the back, but it's still, well, it is visible. That's why it showed up.
Big face.
Yeah, that's the only reason I I thought it was necessary.
Um, and Dana, am I correct in understanding that this meets all standards of Harb? It's just uh, you want to put.
Yes, questionable in the sense that this is not normal. It's, I just thought that we should be aware that it's going to be there if somebody asks this about it.
Absolutely appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Bush Kerry seven zero, Mr. Dugan.
Okay, and the second one, I'm not going to make a motion for, so let somebody else make a motion. I'll say, well, I'm not voting for it.
I'll make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for a three-story addition request for one nineteen Main Street access recommended by Harb four to one per action memo of November seventh, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, um, my biggest concern with this is first of all, this hasn't been through planning yet. Um, they did not give me any information on, um, well, you wouldn't ask for it at Harb, but the uh, there, what the parking's gonna be like, how they're gonna handle all that in an area that is uh that is definitely, they, the people, the residents there are always concerned about parking. And I didn't, uh, it's, I did not get enough information and I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse by approving some imaginary structure that it hasn't even gone through planning yet. So it, it, it's looks really pretty on paper, but it doesn't really exist, so.
Mr. Murray, would you like to uh speak on behalf of your client?
Yes, um, Mike Murray here on behalf of the owners of one nineteen South Main Street, which is, was the uh former Moose Lodge. Uh, the applicants went before Harb at this time, the, I guess to show a structure prior to going to land development because depending on what they uh, if and how they could build it, according to Harb standards would impact how the structure would act ultimately um, be, go through land development. So they wanted to make sure what they were proposing on the site from the aesthetic appearance outside uh met uh Harb standards. And it was, uh, I guess reviewed by the Harb consultant and uh was recommended uh four to one. Uh, during that meeting, there was a discussion with regard to uh whether uh, around the windows should be white, which was uh what was shown to Harb at the meeting. Or uh should be um black, uh, which potentially would look, there was some discussion with Harb. And uh, with, with the property owner who even said they would be willing to do a black treatments. Uh, I believe a, an exhibit was submitted to show what the building would look like with uh, with the black. And I believe Gene has that if he wants to show that. Oh, the, the only thing that we're uh here looking to do because it came up at Harb and if there was a desire for there to be black around the windows, uh, the applicant would be willing to do that and have prepared this exhibit to show uh what would be uh, what it would look like if it was black.
And the uh, the portion of the project that Miss Dugan's referencing in terms of not having been in front of planning commission yet is the, is just the additions of the third floor. Uh, that.
Correct, that's the only, that, that's what's being proposed, the addition to the third floor of that. Uh, the Harb consultant indicated that what was being proposed is in performance with the Harb regulations.
So there's nothing behind the building?
That's correct. I mean, that's it for, so they took ownership of this building in, in May and have been back and forth in communication with uh Dave Volker, director of planning. Some thoughts were, were to uh, extend the building. If you see there, it steps in or back in the back and fill that in. And um, it was suggested that, that it from, from a historical standpoint, that it made more sense to uh go up versus filling in the back.
Mr. Murray, am I correct that while your client would like the black as presented here, if council felt that it just wanted to approve uh, with the white windows as shown to Harb, your client would also accept that?
That is correct.
Um, and, and I just want to note for council that uh we don't modify Harb's recommendations very often. Um, and as a result of the conversation that at least conveyed to me happened at Harb. Um, we can however, you know, modify as desired, uh, because Harb is a advisory body, um, kind of like the planning commission, they provide recommendations. So if council uh sees the black windows and thinks that they are looking to approve the certificate of appropriateness, but prefer the black windows, that's certainly.
And I, I guess two things that I would also point out was in what was presented to Harb, the, the lower doors were presented in black already. And also, uh, there, there was a, since then, there was a photo obtained from the historical society showing that the uh windows at one time were all black around.
I, it's rare that we get to pick a color, so I, I'm, I'm a fan of uh breaking black, so I'm certainly comfortable with this being a moving forward. It looks like a good plan. I, I understand the concerns of it not having not gone to its planning, but you'll have your.
That's correct. It'll be.
Full day there for sure, so.
The land development plan will be submitted and all these issues will be vetted there.
Yes, to your point, Mr. Ewald, while we are approving the look, we're not approving the third floor yet that would go through. So just for that point, I think the black looks lovely, so I, you know, would also be in favor of that.
I, I have a question, uh, it, uh, in terms of the rendering, how much can they deviate from what's being proposed at this point?
From a design perspective, not a lot. Um, from a purely land development perspective, um, you know, they still have to uh present a land development plan. And if that land development plan were to create a building that looked different than this, they would then have to go back before Harb.
If I might, if you're looking at that, that image, you see the, you know, the scale type of facade at the top, right?
Right.
They could not come in and put in hardy plank, uh, uh, the lap board.
Okay.
As an example, as we played, they could not do that. This is what they would have to put up.
Great. There was a pretty extensive submission. I think it was about seventy-six pages of materials and it showed that the type of materials that the roof and other treatments would be made of, the lighting uh, with the gas light fixtures in the front. All, all that stuff is been, I guess, reviewed by Harb. So this is all we're looking at is the look, so they can move forward with design of a land development.
I would add that I, I understand Miss Dugan's uh concern and it's a bit of a chicken and egg thing here. Um, because planning commission always wants to say, well, why didn't you go to Harb first if, if they go to planning commission first and vice versa? Um, I can say from a legal perspective, it's helpful for me when I'm preparing resolutions related to land development to know the hard decision before that point. Um, because then I can bake in some of the, the hard requirements into the land development approval.
A question for, for Mr. Murray. Um, how much height does this add?
How much height does this add to the building from the top of the brick pyramid there to the top of the, the new structure?
Do we need to amend the motion to, to formally support the ability to swap the window paint, frame colors, or is that within the motion? The motion would need to be amended if the motion makers apply. Alternatively, we could have dueling motions if the motion maker is not.
I'm inclined.
A second or?
Second.
So have a motion amended? Right?
Is that official enough?
Yep, that works for me. We were amended motion allowing the, the glazing frames to be black. Are there other questions on this core of application?
I thought it was approved as black, but they could be reversed to white if we so desire.
The opposite.
Okay.
So in front of Harvard, they brought forward a way, a plan with, with white glazing frames and after the fact, they came back with the idea that black might look really good. See no other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six one. Hey, Mr. Murray?
Thank you.
Anything else out of Harvard, Ms. Dugan?
No, that's it.
Thank you, moving on to Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee, Mr. Kirk.
Not much to report, Mr. President, the next meeting, the, the combined November, December meeting will be November twenty-nine.
Thank you. Ms. Dugan with Red Board?
Now, now some of the interesting things that we've got coming up for November and December. We've got a, the blood pressure and screenings there when there's a nurse on, on site, that's every third Tuesday from six to seven. We've got a safe sitter program on Saturday, January sixth from nine thirty to three thirty for grade six to eight. And that's a good way to prepare students to learn how to be a babysitter. Parents' night out is, next couple of ones are November seventeenth and December fifteenth. That's for six to twelve-year-olds. And then we've got a couple of schools out programs for November twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second. One of them is a youth basketball from nine thirty to three o'clock. And a FaceTime theater from nine to one. And youth yoga from nine to three. Ages range from first grade to eighth grade, six to eleven, and kindergarten through twelve. Definitely look that up on your, on the website. Um, yeah, I don't know. Um, then we've got youth and family programs, the Young Rembrandts art class, we've got a couple workshops for that, there's a Thanksgiving themed one on November twentieth, a winter workshop on December sixteenth, and a winter break one on December twenty-seventh. And then we've got open gym from Mondays to Thursdays from three thirty to five thirty, and Fridays from three thirty to four thirty. Soccer shots, that's a one with, that depends on your age when to sign up for, when to go to those, they go anywhere from November sixth to just the end of December, so there's several different age groups for that. Young Rembrandts for fall and winter, that's a regular scheduled class from December ninth to January twenty-seventh. For there's ages one to three years old with a caretaker. Three to five, five to twelve, another thing that you would want to check out on the website. Little Hoops Basketball, that's for sixty-eight-year-olds, November eleventh, December seventeenth, from nine thirty to ten thirty. Badminton lessons, there's a couple. You can just show up for some of those one-hour group sessions. Then there's youth yoga for, well, a couple of different age ranges for that too, four to six-year-olds, seven to ten-year-olds, and eleven to thirteen-year-olds. Golf lessons on Tuesdays from, until December fifth. That's Tuesdays from five to six. There's adult classes, the key gong, that's Fridays from November third to December eighth, from ten to eleven a.m. And a ballet class that is from nine thirty to ten thirty in the morning on Saturdays, starting in November through January. And we've got pickleball, which is a very popular sport these days, we've even got one for the seniors if you are a member of the senior center. So there's a couple of different groups for that too. And all abilities yoga class, there are several scheduled ones, ones for those coming up for a different time, six p.m., Mondays at six p.m., Tuesdays at nine a.m., Wednesdays at six, Thursdays at nine thirty, Thursdays at six, and Saturday at ten. So definitely check your, the website for that one. And then there's coed indoor volleyball on Saturdays until the end of November. That's all I have this time.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. With that, we'll move on to tree advisory commission, Ms. Berkeley.
So this Saturday, November eighteenth, will be the fall planting, so that is our volunteer planting, please come out at eight a.m. We'll meet at Reeves Park, they'll do a demo, there will be an art exhibit that is called Tremendous Trees, it's a children's art exhibit in the gazebo there at Reeves Park, there'll be some refreshments and remarks, and then volunteers, and I'm looking at Mr. Carmenito because he always comes out and volunteers, and he's a good, good hole digger and knows how to get that tree just where it needs to be and get every, it's, it's a process. So volunteers do out some different sections of the borough that Tac has worked with staff to identify where tree plantings need to go. They are already working on the spring planting as well, I'm looking at the inventory for that.
And moving on to personnel and public safety, Ms. Berkeley?
Oh, that would be me again, no action, but just as always, I will give the little commercial of those who want to get involved, we have some vacancies, although we did fill one tonight, and the vacancies look a lot better than they have in a long time, we still have the need for two alternates on our civil service commission, we have a vacancy on Tac. And then our human relations commission has two vacancies as well, if you're interested, seek out a council member that you know, or if you don't know one of us, I'm not shy, so certainly reach out to me.
Thank you, move on to Parks and Rec with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had a discussion at the previous meeting concerning the being filled inside out, preliminary discussion and initial had a significant amount of public testimony. The, the other item that was dealt with has been dealt with in our consent agenda, so I'll just note that next Parks and Rec Commission, Recreation Committee meeting will be next Tuesday, the twenty-first, six, six p.m., and we will be included on that agenda, will be a discussion of the the borough survey about Phoenixville Inside Out.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Kirk, policy?
Thank you, Mr. President, we have a number of items to take up, I would, I am making a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance for redistricting of wards and precincts in the borough.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirk, or second by Miss Berkeley for rewarding? Questions on this motion? Been in front of us several times, several maps presented, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She carries seven, zero.
I will also make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance, amend, amending chapter fifteen of the motor vehicles ordinance.
Second.
And by Mr. Kirk, or second by Miss Berkeley?
If I may add, this is to regulate permit parking in lot number two, I believe, the new lot on Church.
Good. Questions on the scheduling and advertising of this motion or this ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And I will make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance that would change the name of Borough Street from Cole Avenue to Cole Drive.
Second.
My Mr. Kirk, or second by Miss Berkeley, questions on this monumental change?
This is just to bring it into compliance with our written ordinance.
Yep.
In the street sign?
Yeah, the actual known pleasure, yes. Questions on this motion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And finally, I'll make a motion to authorize submission of a letter to the State Department of Community and Economic Development to participate in formation of a council of governments.
Second.
My Mr. Kirk, or second by Miss Berkeley, questions on the application for C O G?
Yeah, and can I just get a quick rundown of?
What is it?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Krack, to hear that.
Sure, we have been for at least eighteen months, actually literally right after Hurricane Ida in dialogue with our, our neighbors in Upper Providence who have brought in their neighbors in Trap and Collegeville, Lower Providence, Royersford, but I think even Spring City to, to look at how we could, on economies of scale from projects to purchases benefit if we did that as a group versus individually. And so we had a, the deputy secretary of state for Department of Community and Economic Development come to a meeting about a month ago, our state legislators representing all of those areas. Paul Frill as for us as well, and Senator Moose's office to listen and figure out what this is, so it is a letter of intent, it doesn't commit the borough to anything, but it will offer the opportunity for D C D to come down and then more vigorously talk with all of us about the things that we could or could not do. Long term, it could result in, you know, other kinds of engagements, but for the purposes that this is going in for is to just look how we could participate financially and, and people-wise to better serve the entire region versus individual municipalities. And so that's what the letter of intent is.
I was wondering if this kind of conglomerate conglomerate has been done anywhere, has there been a problem, or is this, we kind of blazing them?
There are, there are COGs around the area. Somewhat tangentially, Mr. Kirk serves on the Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission, which is a, a version of a C O G on the planning side of things. So not as intense as a C O G, C O G can get pretty intense, but the, the involvement of multiple municipalities working together for the collective. In his case, it's, it's on the planning side, zoning side, in this case, it would be more on the acquisition, purchasing like kinds of things that we do, whether it be buying salt, possibly buy an equipment that we can mutually share, those kinds of things.
If I may add, I, I believe the Pottstown area has, has a C O G and has had one.
Pottstown does, Greater West, there's a fairly large one in Westchester areas, there's, there's a number of them in the region. And they all serve, serve a different formula of what they're looking to accomplish too. Any questions on the motion for the C O G? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, anything else out of policy tonight, Mr. Kirk?
Nothing else, sir.
Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Weiss with I T T S.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, lots going on, but nothing to report at this time, our next meeting is one week from tonight in this room at seven p.m. on the twenty-first.
I will say the, the improvements that are recently completed at Star and Nut look tremendous, and Paradise Street is shaping up very nicely to, to look like a natural street, so. Nice to see projects come into completion here. Ms. Dugan with finance?
Nothing else to report this evening.
Thank you, and with that, we will open up the second final round of public participation, any members of the public wishing to make comment? We ask that you step up to the podium, state your name and whether you're a resident or not, and sign in on the sheet provided. And additionally, if you're joining us via the Zoom platform, please raise, raise your hand digitally, and a member of our staff will unmute you, and you can make comments to council. Seeing no hands raised on the Zoom platform and no line at the podium, we will close the second and final round of public participation. With that, we'll move on to communications, council participation for any items that may have come to you during the meeting. With that, we'll move on to staff reports, they're in your packets. One announcement, we did a, council did meeting executive session October tenth to discuss real estate and litigation. We do have a need for executive session tonight to discuss personnel, real estate and litigation.
With that, I'll make it a motion to adjourn into executive session for those purposes.
Second. Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, thank you very much, we will not be coming back from executive session, so have a great night, we will see you at the December meeting, good night.